As Vice Chair, I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Ms. Aller, would you call the roll? Forgot to check on Ms. Aller, I'm sorry. I did look around, I'm sorry.
Dr. Beers. Ms. Cook. Ms. Hunley. Ms. Hummel. Mr. Dowell. And Mrs. Young.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve Ms. Ordigo to attend the meeting via electronic communication?
Mr. Chairman, I move to allow Ms. Ordigo to attend the meeting via electronic communication.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Young and Ms. Aller.
Ms. Cook. Ms. Hummel. Ms. Hunley. Dr. Beers. Mrs. Young. Mr. Dowell.
Hi, welcome, Ms. Ordigo. And welcome, Ms. Hunley, to your first meetings of your term for the Williamsburg James City County School Board. Just glad to have, really glad to have you both. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook. Ms. Hummel. Ms. Hunley. Ms. Ordigo. Mrs. Young. Dr. Beers. Mr. Dowell.
Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. This evening, this is one of, the first of two budget work sessions, providing some very preliminary information on the budget outlook. And Ms. Nguyen will do most of the presentation this evening, but she'll be joined by other staff members virtually to present some pieces as well. So Ms. Nguyen, our Chief Financial Officer, will take it from here.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good afternoon, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. This afternoon, we will be presenting and discussing preliminary information related to the fiscal year 23 operating budget. An overview of the items that we will be reviewing this afternoon. First will be background information related to the requirements for developing the budget. And I will provide a brief overview of the budget process to date. We'll review the historical enrollment information, as well as the projection for next year. And we will then take a preliminary look at the revenue based on Governor Northam's budget, as well as review mandatory and essential operating expenditure increases. We'll summarize everything that we present to you this afternoon and go over next steps. There are a couple of state code sections that apply to school divisions. The first one is Code Section 15.2-2503, time for preparation and approval of budget and contents. This code section requires that on or before April 1st each year, we must approve a budget of need to pass on to our governing bodies, both Williamsburg and James City County. The second state code section, 22.1-92, estimate of monies needed for public schools, requires the superintendent, with the approval of the school board, to provide an estimate of the amount of money that is considered to be needed to support the public schools in the division, and that the budget must be set up by each major classification or category that has been prescribed by the Board of Education. We use our strategic plan's priorities to guide the development of the budget, to ensure that the budget aligns with the goals of our strategic plan, and that it supports the needs and goals of the school division, taking into consideration the input of our stakeholders. As we did last year, we will show the alignment with the goals of Elevate Beyond Excellence for the budget increases at our next budget work session on January 18th. In the October-November timeframe, we began collecting input from each school principal and each department administrator for the operating budget. At that time, they entered their requests into our financial system. And we then met with each department individually to discuss their requests and determine their needs. In December, we began discussing and evaluating the call center requests with the superintendent's senior leadership team, to ensure that what we present to you is indicative of need. This process will continue throughout this month, as we will share additional information with you at the next budget work session on January 18th. We are presenting the items that were determined to be necessary to the division, so that we may gather your opinion as to how those needs should be prioritized into a final budget. The Local Composite Index, or LCI, is the state's measurement of each locality's ability to pay for public education. The formula takes into consideration the changes in property values and taxes, the local income and retail sales, and compares it to that for the entire state. Each locality's index is adjusted to maintain an overall statewide local share of 45% and an overall state share of 55%. Much of our funding is derived from a per pupil cost multiplied by 1 minus the composite index. So the lower the composite index results in more state funding, while a higher composite index would result in less state funding. The LCI is supposed to be an indicator of the wealth of the locality. If it goes up, the locality is deemed to have increased wealth and will be able to provide additional funding to support its programs. The LCI is updated at the start of each biennium. Since our school division serves two localities, we have two LCIs, both of which have decreased for the new biennium. The city of Williamsburg has changed from .7459 to .7217, and James City County's is decreasing from .5553 to .5331 for the 2022-2024 biennium. This chart is a historical view of the local composite index, starting in 2005-2006 through 2022-2023. Williamsburg was consistently at the highest LCI of .8 until 2017, when it started decreasing gradually each year. James City County's LCI has been more volatile and has fluctuated from .5998 in 2006, dropping to .5286 in 2009 at the beginning of the recession, then been somewhat stable around .56 and decreasing to .5331 for the next biennium. Now we'll move into our review of enrollment information and the projection for next fiscal year. Enrollment is based on our September 30th student count each year. Here is a historical look at our enrollment from fiscal year 2014 until now. We had a steady increase in enrollment through fiscal year 2018, then enrollment leveled off for a couple of years at approximately 11,450 prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. We saw a decline in enrollment in fiscal year 21 to 10,858 due to the pandemic, but we have an increase this year of 160 students, putting enrollment at 11,018. Each year, Future Think prepares a 10-year enrollment projection based on our September 30th enrollment information. These projections include a low, moderate, most likely, and high projection. Next year's projection ranges from a low of 10,892 to a high of 11,166. For many years, we have used the low projection to develop our operating budget, but as we move into the fiscal year 23 budget cycle, we are planning to develop the budget again based on our current year enrollment as of September 30th. Enrollment is slowly recovering after the decline due to the pandemic, and we believe the most conservative approach is to budget based on the students that we currently have. As a reminder, these enrollment numbers do not include preschool students, which total 395 each year. Moving on to revenue, this will be a first look at our estimated state revenue based on Governor Northam's introduced budget. This is all preliminary information based on the governor's budget that could change based on action by the General Assembly. This table shows a comparison of our state revenue as presented in the governor's proposed budget and compared to our fiscal year 22 adopted budget. Governor Northam's introduced budget includes the most recent estimates of sales tax revenue dedicated to public education. The estimates include both the 1% and the 1/8% portion that are appropriated for distribution to school divisions based on school age population. It is projected that we will see an increase of 1.9 million in fiscal year 23 related to sales tax. Technical re-benchmarking updates to the Standards of Quality, or SOQ, incentive categorical and lottery-funded accounts for salary, prevailing support costs, inflation, enrollment projections, and other technical updates, as well as various proposed policy changes are also included. The re-benchmark budget represents the state cost of continuing direct aid programs into the next biennium, with updates to the input data, like average salary, used in the funding formulas that determines the cost of the programs. Since 90% of state direct aid funding is for SOQ programs, SOQ funding is most impacted by the re-benchmarking process. As you can see from this table, our estimated increase in SOQ funding is approximately 3.7 million. As an example, the funded salary for SOQ positions, the elementary teacher funded salary in the 2020-2022 biennium was 51,371, and for the next biennium, it is 53,996, as an example. Incentive programs will see an increase of approximately 1.5 million. This is primarily due to the grocery tax and re-benchmarking hold harmless, as well as increased funding for students educationally at risk. The governor's budget also provides funding for a 5% compensation supplement effective on July 1st, 2022, and another 5% compensation supplement effective on July 1st, 2023. Projected lottery amounts are being used to fund the state's share of various programs, such as the Infrastructure and Operations Per Pupil Fund, Early Reading Intervention, K-3 Primary Class Size Reduction, and SOL Algebra Readiness. We are estimating an increase of approximately 790,000 in this area as compared to our adopted fiscal year 22 budget. This is primarily related to an increase in funds to expand the Early Reading Initiative to 4th and 5th grades, as well as the increased funding for students educationally at risk, which is partially funded from lottery funds. Overall, we are looking at a total increase in state funding of approximately 8 million, or 14.7% over our current fiscal year 22 budget. One item that is included in Governor Northam's budget but not reflected here is state funding for school construction grants in fiscal year 23, as these funds will be accounted for in our Capital Projects Fund. Our estimated allocation for these grants is 4.6 million. Before moving on to expenditures, we wanted to pause and see if there are any questions at this time.
Excuse me, any questions from the board? Ms. Young, and then we'll come to Ms. Cook.
Would you go back and, back to Governor Northam's budget, please, and talk about the 5%, that you mentioned two 5% increases?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you just re-relay that to me? I'm sorry, I've got jet lag, so. That was for, was that for salaries for teachers?
Salary increase for SOQ-funded positions. 5% in each year of the biennium is what's included in Governor Northam's budget.
But that's not reflected here, right?
There's money, yes, there's a part of our revenue includes compensation supplements, so yes. So the current year, we also are getting a compensation supplement. I don't have that information right at hand, but yes.
So when the governor proposes a budget, all finance CFOs get a Calc tool, and they're able to put all of those numbers into a Calc tool to estimate what the increase will be. The uncertainty this year is, of course, with the change in governor. We don't know if it'll be exactly the same or whether it will change. We are very hopeful, because the new governor ran on a platform of public education as well. So we're hopeful that these incentives for teachers and SOQ-funded positions will actually stay, but we really, really don't know. But we base, we have to base our initial projections on the numbers we have right now.
Ms. Young?
Yes, going back to SOQ positions, can you just identify which positions those are for the listening public?
If you give me just one moment, I could provide an example.
Just to clarify, that is not all teachers, correct?
That is not all teachers. That is the, to meet the SOQ minimum standards for teacher ratios, for teachers. And it also includes other positions, like principals, assistant principals, teachers aides.
So in effect, that means that there's money in the governor's budget, or in any new budget, for a portion of our staff, but not for all of our staff. And that is generally funded by the localities, the increase.
Yeah, the majority of our budget is borne by the local governments. So I have a couple of questions about enrollment, and then about the governor's budget. So the first thing about enrollment and the recommendation to, to count on 11, roughly 11,000 students coming next year, based on current enrollment. That's what we did for this current budget that we're in right now, yet we saw more than 100 new children show up. So we're, can you just talk about absorbing 100-plus new children into a school, you know, school system when you've budgeted for a certain number? Like, how does that work? What kind of pressure?
I think it puts a certain amount of pressure on. Obviously, we had 160 new students this year that were not budgeted for. I do think we've been in a very fortunate position this year because of grant funding, and that has been used to supplement some of the budget that we have. And you'll find when we get into some of the mandatory positions, we are starting to try to bring those positions into the operating budget. Last year, we had eight new teachers, nine new teachers, in fact, funded with the ARP grant. So we accounted for that increase, and we're able to manage it with grant funds. We've looked at this very carefully. The projected increase, we're suggesting it would be a conservative approach to keep it exactly the students that we have this year, because the numbers, we had about 30 students over that amount already since September 30th, but that actually has fluctuated quite a bit. And we're uncertain as to whether we'll have more than this or not. Obviously, we hope we'll have a lot more students back, but I think with the continuing pandemic, it's become a little bit more uncertain.
And for the, just for the public, for budgeting for 11,018 students, can you remind us where that is in terms of what Future Think told us? And I know Future Think is not today as reliable as it historically has been for us because of the cohort survival method and the pandemic and the kind of artificially low numbers. But can you just give us a sense of where that is with regard to low, moderate, or high projections? Is this higher, lower?
For the current year?
No, for what they're projecting for next year.
For next year, they're projecting a low of 10,892 to a high of 11,166.
So it's sort of in between? Thank you.
And as you recall this year, Ms. Cook, we came in above the high projection. Because they were realistically low last year.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as the governor's budget, in your experience, is the governor's budget usually the best-case scenario? Once it hits the General Assembly? I mean, is this the best we can hope for in your estimation?
My best guess, probably. It tends to change as it goes through the General Assembly, especially this year with a new governor coming in.
And then do you have any idea why a nearly 14% increase in state sales tax is projected? Do you have any, has that, has anything in your circles, have you heard anything about why a double-digit percentage increase is being projected for next year? Do we have any, no idea? That number just sort of frightens me frankly.
It's large, and I know the county and city are aware of it as well, that it is projected to come in higher, I guess, due to increased revenue across the Commonwealth.
And that's the sales tax that's now coming directly to us?
That's correct.
As opposed to through the, so if it comes in lower, then we've got to manage that.
Correct, and that's why when we approach the sales tax, we don't budget at 100% of that expectation. We actually will budget at about 97%. Because if it comes in lower, we've got to cut something else to find the money. And so we've got to be conservative in how much of that we budget.
And the $3.7 million increase for the SOQs, does that include, you talked about re-benchmarking in the LCI. Is that sort of a compilation of the changes in both re-benchmarking and the LCI? Is that reflected in that number?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And then, in your sort of historical knowledge with the $7.9 million, 14.7% increase, how does that compare to past years? I mean, is that larger than normal?
I don't have that information readily available, but I believe it is.
That's my impression, too. Okay, thank you very much.
I think it would be larger than the normal, and what it includes still is embedded in it is hold harmless for enrollment for one more year. So potentially, it could be less next year if they go on our actual enrollment. But across the Commonwealth, there's been such a loss of enrollment in every school division, that they've embedded within this the hold harmless.
Right, so strategically, given that we don't get to keep money at the end of the year, that goes back to the locality, but that's a pretty significant increase. It's possible we may be facing next year, you know, something slightly lower.
Potentially, and then we also have to be aware that the grant funding begins, has to be used by a certain date, by September 24. And so at that point, that money will go away as well, which is why when we start to talk about positions, we're starting to bring them into operating funds, so that we don't end up in 18 months' time with a huge deficit and lose positions that are essential to our operation. Thank you.
Ms. Ordigo, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a couple clarifying questions for my own edification, since this is brand new. So I apologize if these are silly questions. But this, the Slide 6, Governor's Proposed Budget, this is as it relates only to James City, Williamsburg, James City County?
Yes, ma'am.
And am I hearing correctly that the Standards of Quality line, that is all salaries, but not all of our salaries?
No, the Standards of Quality includes several different revenue lines. It's part of the state budget. It's our basic aid, it's funding for textbooks, it's funding for remediation funding, it's the revenue. it's the revenue portion that we get to support VRS retirement, as, those are some of the examples.
Okay.
However, embedded in that is the increase in salary, the five percent first year, five percent second year of the biennium. It's, it's embedded in that too, and then the localities will have to fund positions that are not under standards of quality. And that, that has been, that has been our norm.
Okay, so that, so that line includes an increase, but not the whole, not total salaries?
Correct, not even close.
Okay.
Any other questions, Ms. Ordago? Okay, uh, any other questions from the board? I just had, uh, one clarifying question, the LCI dropping from five 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 three point five 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 three to point five three three one. Do we know what that looks like in dollars and cents yet?
The change in the LCI, uh, our best estimate is it means an increase of approximately one point six million in funding.
Okay, and to Ms. Ordago's question around SOQ, can you talk about the re-benchmarking process? How that works, how it affects SOQ in a brief fashion? You, you don't have to go into really deep analysis, just, you know, just understand.
I think they just look at all the data, I don't know how many years they go back, and just kind of re-benchmark, like, average salaries, for example, as I shared as one example. The average salary for positions that they fund has gone up for the next biennium.
And, and they do that during each biennium or on a different cycle, on a different calendar?
Each biennium.
Each biennium, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. If there are no other questions, we'll actually continue.
Okay. So related to compensation, for WJCC, every one percent of salary increase costs the division approximately one million. A five percent salary increase would therefore be five million, and a six percent salary increase would cost us six million. The governor's introduced budget again provides a five percent salary increase in each year of the biennium for funded SOQ instructional and support positions. The mid-year salary increase of a dollar twenty-five per hour for bus drivers, provided, provided by the board effective December first, is being funded in the current year through our fiscal year twenty-one year-end spending plan. But in order to maintain the increase, we will need to add two hundred thousand dollars to our budget. As we look at salary increases, we'll want to consider our competitiveness for attracting and retaining staff. Mr. Baker had previously presented information to you in November regarding our current rankings. Out of six regional school divisions, our ranking is third out of six in bachelor's entry level salary and fourth out of six in master's entry level pay. If we do not provide more of a salary increase, then struggle in competing with other local divisions for the strongest candidates.
This is where we, we probably need, uh, some sense of what the board is thinking. I know at a, a previous workshop, there were several board members really were, wanted us to be bold in, in terms of salary increase. We don't know if the governor's, uh, budget will hold, and it will be five percent each year, it could be more, it could be less. Um, but if it's five, do we want to come in as a division at five and a half or six percent and make ourselves attractive to the region and not get behind any further? Um, if it's four, do we want to come in at four and a half or five? Where, where do we want to be situated in terms of salary to keep the excellent staff that we have and attract others? As you know, this has been an incredibly different, difficult year to bring new teachers and current teachers into our system to staff every classroom, so we will want some comments and thoughts on that moving out of today so that we can start to plan what to put in, in the proposed budget.
Well, I, I kind of agree, and I think it was, um, Ms. Cook that said we should be bold. I think if anyone's been reading any of the headlines, it's going to be even more and more important to retain employees. There's the great resignation that we're hearing about. Um, we're hearing that, uh, just in the Wall Street Journal today, it was talking about, you know, employees are going to be kind of expecting, along with inflation, that their salaries are going to keep pace with, uh, the competitive nature of the workforce right now and with inflation. So I, I think that I, I'm in favor of being bold to the extent of, if it's five percent, let's offer them seven percent. Um, and, and fund it that way if there's any way to make that work. So that's sort of my, I'm, I'm on the bold train.
Ms. Humble.
I'd like to echo second that, I'm on the bold train as well, and I'm concerned about divisions that are offering signing bonuses to teachers, um, from other divisions. So not only do we have to compete with the salary, but they're going to offer a signing bonus, and I'm not sure how we, how we're going to compete with that as well, so I'd like to go bold as well.
Ms. Cook?
Um, yeah, and I think, uh, signing bonuses, retention bonuses, um, I think for me, uh, salary has always been a priority, um, but I think sometimes we've, because we see other priorities, we've put up new positions in which were critically important, um, and, and maybe not gotten as much, uh, gained as much ground on the salary thing, because we've really never been in a position where we were hurting because we were opening school with, with, um, with empty seats. But, uh, to, to Ms. Hummel's point, uh, the ground has shifted, and I, I, I believe that the efforts to improve the workforce, uh, the teaching workforce will work, but they're not going to work immediately. And so in the interim, I, I think we need to, and I, one of the things I've said before is, is offer a raise that is eyebrow-raising enough to, um, to give people second thoughts who, who are thinking about retiring. Um, because, um, because it can improve their retirement, um, revenue or in, in income. So I am also in favor of being bold and seeing what the opportunity cost of that. I mean, we have yet to see what, what these other required, uh, increases are, so we have to always look at the opportunity cost of that. But this is my first, second, and third priority, for sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair.
Ms. Young?
Well, I've always been.
Dr. Beers, I'll come to you next. Come to you next.
Okay, I, I guess, um, for me, I, to, to me, teacher salaries are very, very important, not only for just attracting, uh, people to come and work here, but for our people that are currently here. And the inflation rate has been pretty astronomical. It seems like if you give people a small raise, well, it's not keeping even up with the, the current index that, uh, is being created by inflation. I personally, I'm with, uh, my other board members, I would like us to be bold. And, um, I know if we put seven percent there, that would mean seven million. I'm, I'm for doing that, um, not only to attract people, but, um, to, to keep people on board.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, I also agree that we need to be, uh, about, uh, as far, as far out as we can in terms of salaries. I also think, and somebody referenced this, is, is, um, is how we look at some of the other increases, uh, is, to me, it's going to have an impact on how much we have available in terms of the compensation category, because, uh, we're looking at a fifteen percent increase in health insurance and, um, but I, 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 I clearly favor that five percent, and if we, how much more we can get, given those other constraints, uh, I would support that as well.
Ms. Ordago?
Sorry, I'm sorry, my bad.
Uh, I mean, yes, I, I would agree with everything that's been said so far. Um, again, this is, you know, more coming in the presentation and, and more budget needs, um, that will be presented. But, but I think that our, our teachers and our staff are one of our greatest and most valuable assets, and, um, they've, they've certainly done a lot of extra work in these last few years and should certainly be at the top of our priority list when it comes to funding.
Uh, for me, bold is an attractive word, I like it, and I like getting out there and being, uh, competitive with, uh, our, uh, neighboring divisions and regional divisions, uh, that compete for talented teachers and, and staff, uh, faculty and staff. Uh, but at the same time, uh, Ms. Cook mentioned opportunity cost, and I, I'm, I'm of the mindset, take in, uh, what you as, uh, staff bring us as a, uh, potential budget, to budget of needs, and see how we can, uh, make the numbers work. Uh, there was a number that was thrown out here, and, uh, we, it looks like it's still, uh, uh, seven million, seven million dollars was thrown out. Um, that causes me a little bit of, of anxiety hearing that number when we don't know the other costs of doing business and delivering sound instruction yet. So while we're talking about being bold, which I do agree with, we need to be bold and we need to get out there, I also think about, um, the, in my two years on the board, the leapfrog effect of offering bonuses and salary incentives, and, um, you know, everyone in the region does, and Ms. Humble points out the, um, the, the, the bonuses, the sign-on bonuses. So what we do, will it be significant enough? And I know that's what we're talking about when we're talking about being bold, but will it truly be significant enough? Or are we truly talking about something that's going to put us on the, uh, on the knife's edge of, of being competitive for the sharpest, um, candidates for the long term or for, for a longer term than a year, than a cycle? Those are my thoughts, yeah.
Can I just add one more thing? The young people I've talked to coming out of colleges and universities, um, that I've mentioned, um, our school division two or any, the thing that they always say is we're going to follow the money, because they're coming out with student debt and things like that. So they are looking at the divisions that provide more money. And that's the term they use, we're going to follow the money.
Ms. Young, you had a comment?
Well, having been a teacher, Ms. Humble's, uh, teacher, I follow the money too. I mean, um, when you have a family and you're trying, even trying to take care of yourself, you want the best options possible for yourself, and that's a personal choice, but it's a correct one, in my opinion. I did want to ask a question about signing, signup bonuses. I know there are other divisions that are doing that. Uh, do we have any idea of how much that amount has been in the past?
We can do some research on that, I don't think we've got a definitive number, because everyone will be doing something different. I think what worked for us last year was early contracts, and, and then a significant raise, and then we, our benefits are also very good right now and have been competitive, uh, up to this point. So we would look at the, the whole picture and, and try to understand, is it better to give a bonus or is it better to attract people and keep them with a, a better salary? Because a bonus will get someone here, but it may not keep them, uh, to, to remain with us as a, as a, as an employee. Um, thank you for, for some of your comments on that. I, I know it's a priority for all of us, because we all understand how difficult it's going to be to attract and retain staff across the board. Uh, I've read articles about principals exiting the profession because of the last two years. We have a shortage of custodial staff, and bus drivers and, and teachers will, will come too. So it, it's really the whole, uh, the whole system that will need to be looked at very, very closely. So I did hear seven percent, um, we don't know what will happen in the, the, the new governor's budget. Um, it may be a more, a better way to approach it is, if it ends up being four per year, what do we want to do in addition to that? Is it plus one, or is it plus two percent, or is it plus half a percent, depending on where the budget actually hits? And, and that would be helpful to have a sense of where the board is on that, so we don't say a big number like seven, because we don't know what, what's going to be the final, and we may not, we may not know. I'm hoping we'll know by the time that my budget's proposed, but there's no guarantee of that.
Thank you, Dr. Aaron. If there aren't any other further, or was there?
Do we want to give guidance on that? Is it plus, I mean, is that what you're asking for right now? I mean, because I would say, let's do plus two, I think that's what Ms. Hummel was suggesting with the seven, so. Is that what you were asking for, Dr. Heron?
Yes, yes, please, because I think it's, uh, you know, we want to work together to have the same sense of supporting our, our staff, for sure.
Well, let's go around, uh, Dr., uh, Ms. Ordago, we'll start with you. And I guess the question is, uh, what level above the governor's, um, um, budget for pay increase for, for salary for staff and faculty? Would we be willing to go ask for, um, Dr. Heron to go? And I think the number that was thrown out was two percent above. How do you feel about that?
The, this is not, we're not voting, right?
We're not voting, we're, we're giving Ms., uh, yeah, we're giving Dr. Heron a little bit of guidance from our board.
I'm.
On what we would be willing to support.
In the context in which it has been presented thus far, I'm not opposed to that.
Dr. Beers?
Uh, yeah, I, 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 uh, I, I think it's, we need to push that, we need to, uh, and I don't know, you know, I don't know, uh, how much the new governor is going to, you know, I don't, does anybody, I mean, do you, I, I know he hasn't been in life very long, but, um, and any sense of, uh, if he tweaks that budget, what, what, what areas?
We really, we really have.
Is he going to stand by, uh, his education statements? Do we?
We have no idea, we really have no idea, and, and the General Assembly may approach it differently as well and want to put the money somewhere else, so we, there's a lot of unknowns right now. And, and this is just some general guidance for us as to what your priorities are. Because when we start to look at everything else, some of this may have to shift as well, but it just gives us something to think about, uh, as we start to plan and try to make all of the numbers work.
Ms. Hummel.
I agree with your assessment, Dr. Heron, to just have some kind of a, a floating, you know, that I do like the two percent above whatever the governor comes out with. I think that's a safer range than if we say, I throw, throw out seven, seven percent, and then the governor comes back at three percent, and then we're really in a hole with our funding partners. Um, because as everyone should know, those standards of quality and the funding that we get from the state is not every, it doesn't, it doesn't cover all of our salaries. So we're already asking our local, um, funding partners to absorb the excess for that. So I think it's a safe route to go, that we, we want to make a commitment to go beyond what we're receiving with the governor's proposed raise.
So with that, if, uh, the governor's budget allocated for five percent, and we said two, uh, how much of, uh, how, how much of that seven percent would our funding partners have to be expected to, to cover? Do we know?
Um, I'm not sure we have a good way to calculate that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think it also depends on every, all the other changes to the budget as well.
Yeah.
And so there's a lot more to, to think about, this is just one major priority for, for all of us moving forward.
Ms. Young?
Well, yesterday, uh, I listened to Jim Gaffigan, I don't know if you know who he is, but he's a comedian, and, uh, he was talking about, uh, during the pandemic, with he and his wife, uh, working with their five children. And then, um, and it was funny, I, I mean, I was laughing, but then he, his ending comment was, why would anybody want to be a teacher after he saw what they went through? And I've heard other parents express that very same, um, opinion, because it's not, and not an easy job. I am for doing as much as possible for, for, for our teachers and our staff. I, I value them, I know this board values them, and, um, that's where I'm at. Let's, let's do as much as we can, and, and I know that, uh, the new governor is an unknown, but at the moment, we're dealing with, uh, Governor Northam's proposed budget or his budget that has been passed, right?
Uh, this is his proposed budget.
Okay, and it, it can change, but, um, I would really like us to do the two percent over.
Ms. Ordago, I'll come back to you, Ms. Cook?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, I agree with the two percent, but I have some other comments specific to salaries. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with the two percent, but I have some other comments specific to salaries. So I I'll defer to you on whether or not you want me to make those now or later, but um so the two percent we're talking about isn't of the governor's budget because that's already been proposed. So I'm assuming the two percent we're talking about is above the adopted General Assembly budget, which is a combination of the governor, ni- old governor, new governor, General Assembly, right? So when people are saying the governor's budget, just for clarity, I wanna be, you know, it is the adopted budget that is adopted by the General Assembly and then goes to the governor's office.
That's correct. Okay. So two percent over that, yes. Um, just a couple of things fr- from just from citizens I've heard and then in response to um kind of conversation around signing bonuses and then retention bonuses. Uh generally speaking, I'm not a huge fan of bonuses because it doesn't go towards VRS. But I wouldn't be in favor, I'd like to learn more, but I would not necessarily be in favor of a signing bonus without a retention bonus, in which case that's just bonuses, right, all around. Um and then also I've heard people say, well, why don't you just give teachers a raise? Instead of, you know, everybody or give a different, and I just wanna be very clear that I I feel very strongly that whatever raise we give should be across the board to every member of our of our uh uh community, not not specific to any one function. I know we just did that with bus drivers, but I think that was more of a re-benchmarking as opposed to um, so I just wanted to to say that. And then also to build on what Mr. Um Dell said about what the local governments would be paying is today's presentation include what we think we might be able uh to predict might be coming from our local governments. We know historically they give us a certain amount each year. I think it's in the two and a half to three percent raise uh percent uh increase. Um I presume you've done those calculations. Will that be shared here or at the next meeting?
We haven't received any specific guidance from the localities, but yes, towards the end of the presentation, I'm sharing what a one and a half percent increase, a two percent and a two and a half over the current year amounts would be.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Huntley?
Yes, I have nothing further to add, other than I'm in agreement with the two percent as well.
Thank you, Ms. Huntley. Mrs. Or- Ms. Ortega? And then Dr. Beers?
Yeah.
Dr. Beers, you're after Ms. Ortega?
I'm sorry.
Just one second, Dr. Beers.
Yeah.
Ms. Ortega?
Okay. Um, so my my questions at this stage would be um just to my colleagues here. Are we are we saying that no matter where the extra, I think we're we're saying about two million, right? Cause two percent equals two million dollars. That so no matter where the extra two million dollars would have to come from, we are willing to say that salary increases for teachers or staff is is number one, no matter what ends up getting cut or or decreased. And two, would pu- would these funds potentially end up coming from, and this is completely hypothetical because I really don't know, but would funds end up coming from other areas that might actually end up burdening teachers in the long run in terms of making their job more difficult or or detracting from other resources that they would need in in other areas?
I don't believe this will take away anything from teachers. I think when we start to talk about increases in health insurance, uh we may need to look at how that balances with an increase in in salary and where we want to put the emphasis um or where the board wants to put the emphasis. Um but I don't think we would ever uh suggest doing this and losing something else that's vital to the organization. A- and again, this is very preliminary. It's just a a thought process. I don't think anyone is saying this is what we're doing right now, but this is where we, this is what we'd like to do and really want to do if we're able to do it.
Right. I just think that in, I mean, in a vacuum or in a hypothetical scenario, we give teachers as much as we possibly could, but it always does come from, it comes from somewhere at the end of the day. So I, that's that's the question is where, what's the trade-off?
And and I think the the question really what what you're asking, if we were to go in with an amount above the final budget that comes out of the General Assembly, we would be asking our localities to fund us more. Ultimately, that will be the source for the funding.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I I was, I would just echo that. Um is that uh we always have exceeded uh funding that we get from the state um every single year and we always count on the city um and the county picking up, yeah, picking up the uh the slack on that. Um I did, and I also, so I think it's very important very early on, and I'm sure you've already started to have discussions with the the city and the county um is to um is to get a sense of how that's gonna play out if if we if we really push for some of these higher numbers. Um and we don't get additional funding from the state that has been uh that's in the uh uh proposed budget right now, um how how will the county and the city respond? Um I think that's really important. I think um I think we can make a ver- a a a very strong case. Um every every school division is is uh uh looking at gaps in their instructional staff and uh uh and we certainly, we have the ability, I don't know if we have the will, we have the ability to get out in in front of that. Uh uh it just means uh it it's gonna be more uh more money and and uh more of it's, most of it's gonna come from the the candidate and from the state, but uh we have the ability and it's really is, you you know, having the will to um to can you just step up and say, we need to get the best and we wanna keep the best uh teachers?
Thank you, Dr. Beers. I think, Dr. Heron, what we're hearing is that we do wanna see this two percent built within your your budgeted and uh at the same time, see how it does or does not affect other cost centers and uh doesn't take away from other things that we might need as we're continuing for it as a division.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can see that. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah.
In the current fiscal year, we funded an additional eight school counselors to meet the recommended ratio of two hundred fifty to one by the National Association of School Counseling and in order to meet the Virginia State Code of providing eighty percent of direct services to students. Four of these positions are currently funded with S R grant funds, which we would need to, which would need to be shifted into the operating fund. The estimated cost for these positions is three hundred twenty thousand. During the current fiscal year, we've added nine elementary teachers in order to maintain our adopted class size ratios. Eight of these positions are currently funded through the American Rescue Plan, but we need to start transitioning these positions into the operating budget. The estimated cost for these positions is seven hundred twenty thousand. Ms. Bujol will now share information related to special education staffing.
Good afternoon, Vice Chairman, members of the board and Dr. Heron. In order to provide context to the special education mandated needs, we will begin by looking at special education population trends. The numbers presented here are based on the December one state reporting document, which is used to determine state and federal funding for special education. The December one count for this year shows a very slight reduction of five students. It is important to note that the overall percentage of enrolled students with a disability is over sixteen percent. Next slide, please. The number of students served in conjunction with their individual levels of need drives the staffing needs for the division. This chart provides trend data for special education staffing over the past eight years. The additions of teachers for the fiscal year twenty-two includes teachers to address program requirements and the addition of new self-contained classrooms at the elementary level. Similarly, teacher assistants were added to support the self-contained classrooms and to support students, some who are new to our division, with mandated services. Next slide, please. Virginia regulations and the Virginia Standards of Quality established the maximum caseload staffing requirements for special education services for school-aged children. Caseload standards per teacher or school average per teacher is a maximum of twenty points except for classrooms serving students with autism, deaf blindness, or multiple disabilities for more than fifty percent of the day, or the caseload maximum that becomes eight students. As this chart indicates, we currently have eight individual teacher caseloads above SO two maximums and twelve caseloads at capacity. These caseload numbers adjust monthly based on revised I E Ps requiring increased services as well as transfer and newly el- eligible students. Our special education teachers have welcomed our students back to five-day-a-week in-person instruction. Despite the challenges that have faced all educators this year, teachers have been flexible in their approach to help meet the needs of students with disabilities. The Department of Special Education has continued to monitor enrollment and caseloads throughout the first semester. This has required readjusting positions and or real- reallocating resources to ensure that we are providing appropriate programming for our students. Despite this changing landscape, dedication from our special education teachers has allowed W J C C schools to continue providing a quality education for all students. Next slide, please.
Four special education teachers are recommended in order to impact the caseload capacities that Ms. Bujol just spoke about. Two of these teachers are currently on staff and being funded with American Rescue Plan grant funds, and these would need to be transitioned into the operating fund. There are also seven special education aides that are currently on staff and being funded with American Rescue Plan grant funds, which we need to transition into the operating fund as well. Four of these aides are one-to-one aides. An additional instructional aid for bright beginnings is needed due to the increased special needs population and the increased needs of students. Increases within instructional technology continue to focus on providing access at all levels to interactive resources. As an example, NearPod provides interactive lessons K through twelve and has been expanded to provide supporting tools for English language learners. Dreambox is a mathematics tool focused at the elementary level that provides S O L resources for teachers to include division assessment data. At this time, we do not have information from New Horizons regarding costs for next year, so we are estimating a ten percent increase. This would include the five percent salary increase that is currently included in the governor's budget. Over the past five years, our costs have increased on average around four percent. Increases within technology are directly aligned to the expansion of the number of devices in supporting our one-to-one program. Several of our vendors held off on pricing increases during the height of the pandemic. However, over the next year, we must adjust our contractual costs to match our licensing counts. Our firewall and network security tools are examples of these adjustments. Increases within transportation amount to approximately eighty-eight thousand, which is related to the system change over the summer. The new system included adding GPS to the entire white fleet, not only the school buses. It also included an electronic inspection program for required pre-trip inspections as well as turn-by-turn navigation. This increased cost also includes a more robust version of the routing system to be able to optimize routes across the division. Earlier this year, we entered into a new lease agreement for a larger storage facility. The increased cost is approximately thirty-two thousand. Our annual radio maintenance agreement through James City County has an annual increase of approximately ten thousand. And at this time, we are currently estimating a ten percent increase in our ground services provided by James City County. Currently, at this point in the budget process, we are estimating a ten percent increase in our workers' compensation, general liability, fleet and property insurances, which amounts to approximately thirty-nine thousand. And for our audit contract with Brown Edwards and risk management services provided by James City County, we are estimating a total increase of eighty-six hundred. Prior to Mr. Baker sharing preliminary information regarding healthcare, we just thought we'd pause to see if there are any questions specifically related to the expenditure information.
Ms. Hummel?
Uh, thank you. I just, uh for kind of the listening public out there, there there were a lot of positions that were funded by the A R P, which is wonderful. I wanna thank the school system for whoever was writing all the grants and getting all the grants and getting all of this money. And um and I also wanna let everyone know, what what was the amount again that we ended up getting back to our funding partners? Because we didn't spend as much money as we, I mean, we gave them a lot of money back, right, millions?
We did. If you, just one moment, I'll I'll get that for you.
And I just wanted to let everyone know because a a lot of times if someone's looking at this, they're going, oh, gosh, they get these grants, they hire these people with grants, and then we've got a mandatory, we gotta either lay people off or bring them into the to our operating expenses. And I just wanted to just kind of lay that out there for everyone that I think it was very savvy use of A R P grant writing that allowed us to get these positions and then uh not leave money on the table from the federal government in order to give money back to the locality. So I just wanted to to let everyone kind of know that. Uh and then the other point was just New Horizons. It, I just want a confirmation. Typically, their salaries are pegged to Newport News, correct?
That's correct.
So whatever salary increase Newport News school system is going to be giving is gonna be uh the increase in expenses for New Horizon.
So the money going back to the locality?
Yeah, so our total surplus for fiscal year twenty-one was eight point nine million that we returned to the localities.
Okay. Okay, thanks. I just want everyone to know that because when people are looking at this, they're like, ah, that's a lot of grant money. And anyway, I just wanted to make sure everyone realized that.
Ms. Young?
Yes, um Renee, can we go back to the slide before where you were talking about increased cost? I mean, uh for example, you said that is this the, is this just increased cost on top of what we are already paying?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, that's what I assume. So I I would appreciate seeing what we are paying and then also.
Okay.
It would just help me have a better understanding of how much is that portion is of the budget, actually.
We can provide that information to you. All of these are increases in services that that we're required to to have or increases in the number of licenses for student access to certain programs.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Heron. Thank you, Renee.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Um, so normally, this is the part of the presentation where we hear about English language learners and ratios. Is that something that's fine this year or we're anticipating it being fine?
Uh, we're anticipating it to stay the same because we took the bold step of adding five teachers last year and I believe we're in line with the the actual ratio per our needs right now.
Okay. Um and then uh uh an earlier slide, um talked about um maintaining uh uh the class ratios and um and transferring those F T Es to our operating budget. Were we able to maintain those class ratios this this year or did we have some slippage because we had, you know, almost, you know, hu- over a hundred and fifty kids show up?
Um. I believe we were for the most part, I'm pretty much able to maintain those. And if, for example, in Stonehouse, we we added a kindergarten teacher in the end of the year. So we were able to maintain those and the idea next year is to continue to do so.
So, yeah, I um I would like to know eh how many we weren't able to maintain, please, cause um.
We can certainly get that information. We did purposefully build into the budget some additional positions last year to allow us to do that.
Okay.
So we had some reserved positions in the operating budget that were there for the anticipated coming back of students that we hadn't budgeted for. So we we can get that for you.
And um and then um a couple of questions about special education. So Ms. Bujol, are you, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So did you say fourteen percent or sixteen percent? I I I don't recall.
Sixteen.
Sixteen percent?
Sixteen percent.
And that's it, that's an increase from previous years, is that correct?
It's a very, very slight decrease. We've, we've hovered around sixteen point seven percent.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so I guess just for um uh if if overall our enrollment is down and our um percentage of special ed is is roughly the same, but we need more F T Es, can you help me understand that? Um that kind of, does that, does my question make sense? I I'm assuming that it's because of the the nature of the special education needs of the students, but if you could just for the public, listening public, explain that, I'd be app- appreciative.
There, obviously, there are a number of factors. The the two primary ones that come to mind, the the last slide we showed you where where classes are at capacity or above capacity, that means that teachers are handling caseloads that are beyond the S O Qs. So that is one reason that would drive the the need for additional classrooms. The capacity is then determined by students' levels of need. So depending on the percent of a day that a student receives special education services, that identifies how many. that identifies how many points a student, um, is counted on a caseload. And so a teacher may have 15 students, but have a caseload count of 22 or 23, depending on the needs of the students. And, and student needs have been increasing, and so caseloads are growing.
Thank you. So I guess my point in asking those questions is to say that, you know, on the face of it, it might look like because our enrollment went down, it's recovered a little bit, that our budget might should go down. But, but in fact, because we have, um, students with increased needs, we have three times the homeless rate. We have, um, we're trying to, uh, lower class size to address learning loss in the wake of the pandemic and even try to get somewhere close to where we were before the recession, uh, of 2008. Uh, and then our special ed population, which has a, is a higher percentage than the national average, but also, um, uh, those kids need, have more needs. So I just wanted to kind of just step back and provide that perspective, which is why we're asking for more FTEs, even though our enrollment is slightly lower than it was two years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Other questions or comments? Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, I, um, I know you've done this in the past, um, and I, uh, you'll probably do it again, but I, I would like to see that. One of the things that, uh, I, I think it's hard for everybody to realize, there's a huge percentage of this budget that is already, um, spoken for. And, and what we're really looking at is how much money is left over that we can use to, you know, increase salaries or however we want to, we want to do it based on the proposed budget that, that you're, that you work on. I think it would be, it, it's, at least it's helpful for me. I think it might be helpful for other people to realize that if, like, a really high percentage of our budget is already spoken for, that it's required. It's either a mandate or, or whatever it might be. Um, and so I'd like to see, I think that would be important to see is, um, uh, because it's, it's always an issue with, with, uh, with a lot of budgets is so much is already spoken for, how much do we actually have to, to, to work with? Um, and, and if we need more, how much more, you know, how much more we need in order to meet some of the, some of the goals, some of the things that we're talking about now. Um, I, and you, you, I know, Renee, you've done that. I've, we've seen that in a, on a, uh, on a pie chart. And I think it's significant. It's, it's significant to see that, that, um, uh, we're, oh, and we never are. We're very efficient. We're always careful. We're, um, um, but I think it's important to, to, for people to realize that there's a, an enormous part of our budget that we really don't have any control over at all. And it's like this smaller amount we do have control over. And the more money we can put into that, uh, that smaller piece of the pie, then the more flexibility we have in, in, you know, in trying to, um, raise salaries significantly or whatever the case may be. But I, I, I really, I'm kind of a visual learner, and I, I, I just think that's very impressive to see that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Anyone else? And Ms. Ewing?
Okay. Mr. Baker, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Hi, Mr. Baker.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, and, and Dr. Heron. As we prepare for this year's budget, we wanted to share information regarding the 1,361 employees who participate in our health insurance. The division offers several health insurance options for staff. And on this slide is the current cost share for the $500 deductible plan. The green bar is the overall cost. The blue is bar is WJCC cost, and the purple is the employee cost. On the $500 deductible plan for employee only, the employee is paying $77 a month, or about 10% of the cost. And we have 155 employees who participate in that plan. For the employees plus spouse, the employee is paying $332 a month, or about 24% of the cost. And we have 41 employees participating in that plan. For the employees plus family, the employee is paying $430 a month, or about 22% of the cost. And we have 120 employees participating in that plan. On the next slide, this is the $250 deductible plan, which is actually our most popular plan amongst our employees. And it does not cost the school division any additional money because the employees pay the difference for this upgrade. On this plan, the employee, for employee only, the employee is paying $165 a month, or about 20% of the cost. And for the employee plus spouse, the employee is paying $495 a month, or about 32% of the cost. And I would, I would just neglect it to say for the employee only, we have 342 employees participating on that. And for employee plus spouse, we have 124 employees participating in that plan. And employees plus family, the employee is paying $668 a month, or about 30% of the cost. And we have 252 employees participating in that plan. On the next slide, we have some information about our high deductible plan. We do not have many participants in the high deductible plan. So for the employee only, we only have 17 employees participating. For employee plus one, we have, uh, only four employees participating. And for the family plan, we only have 17 employees participating. And again, we don't have many employees who choose the high deductible plan because for not much more money, they can get into the $500 deductible plan. On the next slide, we discussed, you know, for, so last year, we had planned for a 5% increase that actually came in at 6.1% for health insurance costs. 5% was absorbed by the employees and the additional 1.1% was absorbed by the school division. Uh, the year before, our increase was 3.2%, and the year before that, our increase was 1.5%. Uh, this year, we're using an estimate of 10% and 15% as we prepare our health insurance renewal. We hope to have the final numbers at our next budget workshop. Please also know that we're going through an RFP process and doing our due diligence regarding health insurance. On the top of my last slide, we show the budget impact of a 10% increase and also a 15% increase. And then below that, we show how different cost-sharing scenarios would impact the budget. On the left-hand column, we show three different cost shares of a 10% increase with a 50/50 split with a budget increase of $1,173,906. Or a 60/40 split with WJCC absorbing 60% and employees absorbing 40%. It would be a budget increase of $1,408,687. Or a 40/60 split with WJCC absorbing 40% of the cost and employees absorbing 60% of the cost. And it would be a budget increase of $939,124. On the right-hand column, we show the three different cost shares with the 15% increase. Again, with the 50/50 split, the budget increase would be $1,760,859. Or a 60/40 split with WJCC absorbing the 60% and employees absorbing the 40% would be a budget increase of $2,113,031. Or a 40/60 split with WJCC absorbing 40% and employees absorbing 60% with the budget increase of $1,408,687. Thank you.
Again, we're going to stop for, to invite some discussion. There are so many unknowns right now. And even though we would like to project no more than a 10% increase, realistically, we wanted to put some other scenarios on the table. Um, in years when we had a very insignificant increase, um, the board at that time really wanted to put the emphasis on compensation. And, uh, a significant amount or all in some cases of the increase was passed on to employees so that we could focus on increasing compensation, which impacts every employee and also impact, impacts VRS. Um, if the number is large, that may be an undue hardship on, on our employees. And I wanted to get some thoughts from the board and some perspective on the board about how we may approach this, even without knowing the final numbers.
So looking at the impact on the budget, the 10% and the 15%, if the division took the brunt of the load versus the family taking the brunt of the load, 10% is a difference of about $500,000, and 15% is a difference of about $700,000? Is that accurate?
Yep.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I have a question.
Yeah, I'll come to you, Ms. Hunter. Ms. Ortego?
Um, I, I guess my question would be, how would this relate to our, um, our previous conversation about salary increases? How would that, how would that balance out if, say, we did the, the 2%? Well, how would it compare to the increase in costs that the employees might, might bear?
Yeah, at the next, um, work session, um, Mr. Baker will come back and actually take a typical teacher salary and show the impact of a percentage increase, and then the impact of healthcare increase at a percentage, and try to show how, what the difference would be for an employee based on several different scenarios. But I think, one, they both are tied together to some extent because they both impact the employees' bottom line.
Sure, because I, I would hate to think we're, you know, if we do do a big salary increase or relatively big, I would hate to think we're doing a much larger, a much larger good than we are if it, if it gets detracted somewhere else. It would just be helpful to see that.
Absolutely. And that is a great question because we, we grapple with this every single year because we're coming from different places.
Ms. Hunter?
Yes, that was my same question that Mrs. Ortego was referring to. Um, it does seem, um, I probably missed where that comparison takes place because that seems to be the thing that's surprising to the teachers when they get their, their check. Their, uh, health insurance, they, when they go back and figure it out, they go, oh, my gosh, it was the health insurance. So I just want to make sure when we put that, um, presentation together to show those scenarios, to make sure that every teacher gets a copy of that and, uh, really looks it over carefully because that is always the number one thing that I hear is, I got a raise, but I didn't know my health insurance was going to, to eat it all up.
I think it's very difficult to present something that will be specific to an individual person because the person could be just themselves on the plan. It could be employee plus spouse, or it could be employee plus family. And, and so, uh, it, it's going to impact different people in different ways depending on which plan they choose and how many family members are on the plan.
So is there a, um, I don't know what you would call it, some type of thing to help them with that, to figure it out? Like a cheat sheet? Not a cheat sheet, but to say, if this is your situation, calculate it this way. If this is your situation, calculate it this way?
Yeah, I think once the final numbers are there, uh, HR does provide personal in- information for every single employee, and then they can go in and assess what it's going to cost. It'd be almost impossible to do now because we don't know the percentage increase, and we don't know how that then impacts each individual plan within the system because they may be affected differently. So it's, there's a lot of unknowns as we walk into this piece and the budget we have right now from the, the governor.
Ms. Young, and then Ms. Cook, and then Dr. Beers.
Yes, um, thank you very much. Uh, um, for, for me, uh, we've had this discussion before about, um, benefits versus salary. Um, and for, for me, it's very important, and I mean, I, it's the long picture, and I know it's, when you're 26 years old and you're teaching, you don't think about retiring. However, in the, for those teachers that are, um, have been here and they're getting close to retirement, I prefer to see, um, I, I prefer to see greater salary and then, and then have some cost cast, uh, passed on to, um, the employee because they have some control over the decisions they make. And, um, I'm, I'm not against, um, sharing the cost. But for me, that, that increase in salary is, is, is pretty, pretty critical. It's not only for competing with the other divisions, but it's also because it's adding to VRS for our employees, and that's, that's where I come from.
Ms. Cook?
Yeah, I, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I agree with, um, with Mrs. Young with regard to, uh, focusing on compensation, um, partially, uh, for retirement, but also because, um, I think it's a more sort of, it's more about parity because not everybody in our employment gets the, um, health insurance, right? So if we, if we invest more in, in, in mitigating the increase in health insurance, we're, in my view, negatively and disproportionately impacting the people who aren't getting our, our health insurance. And that doesn't seem very fair to me. So could you remind us of what percentage of our employees are on our health insurance?
Mr. Baker, I think you provided the number earlier.
It's 1,331 of our, uh, 1,361 of our approximately 1,800 employees.
So that, what, is that 70%? So I worry about the...
25% roughly.
So the 25% who are not, um, on our health insurance. And also, can we get, uh, you've been really great about, in the past years, providing, um, that total compensation and what percentage of our total compensation goes to health insurance, benchmarking us against, um, other divisions? Because last we checked, we are sort of disproportionately over-invested in health insurance compared to our peers. Um, by a couple of percentage points, right? Is that right? Um, so could we, if we could get that comparison for this fiscal year and see if that's moved at all? Um, so whenever we're looking at this, um, I like to invest more in, in salary and less in, in benefits. Uh, that said, I recognize that that shift is most difficult on our lower-paid employees because if you're a, a, a seven, let's say, 7% raise for a $75,000 a year worker versus a $15,000 a year worker. Um, so that, that's where I really struggle. I'm less concerned about it for the higher-paid employees, but for the lower-paid employees who really, who do, our teachers assistants, they actually see pay cuts when we do this and, um, take-home pay cuts, and that's very hard. Um, but overall, like strategically, I do think we need to shift more into, um, when you're looking at total compensation, to shift more for salary. And then also, it was, could you help me understand, I was surprised to see, um, it was my understanding that for all three plans, WJCC was supposed to put in the same amount of money. So I see like for employee only, it's 662 for two of them, but then 544 for the high deductible. And I thought we had, for many years, it's going to be the same amount for all three plans for, uh...
That's because the total cost for the high deductible for employee only is only 605?
Right, so then, but then wasn't, weren't you all supposed to then put money into the HSA with the, with the, the Delta?
We do put money into the HSA.
They, they put in $116 into the HSA for the employee only.
Okay, so then that equals 662? Is it the same amount of money?
I think it's, yeah, it's pretty close, yes, ma'am.
So it'd be helpful, I think, if that were reflected or noted in this chart because it looks like we're putting it, it looks like we're under-investing in the high deductible plan, which I, I guess is not the case.
I think we made the decision to equal the amount that we would pay for each employee at least three years ago.
Right.
So we'll, we'll, we'll double-check and make sure that we're still on target with...
Right, yeah, just, it's, I don't think that's reflected here, so maybe there needs to be a footnote or something. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, um, I, I know it was a few years ago that we reached a point where, uh, we started to, uh, put more of the, um, increase of health insurance onto our, uh, employees. And, um, as health insurance continues to go up... And, um, as health insurance continues to go up, and, um, I, I think that's a trend that we're not going to be able to, uh, move away from. But I think that also suggests, and I agree with Ms. Cook and Mrs. Young, is that, uh, if you, uh, continue to e- increase, um, salaries, I, I think that's a more viable way to go. It, it's, uh, uh, we're still paying the lion's share of the, of the insurance for our employees. If you look at the, I mean, it is astronomical. I mean, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five hundred dollars a month when you add those, those two figures together, it's, it's, it's amazing. So, um, but I, I do think, um, that we, we will reach a point where, uh, uh, we can't continue to pick up that, uh, that increased cost the way we have in the past. And I think we've started to do that more the last couple of years. And so I, I don't think, I'm hoping, and I, 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 I share your, the, the idea that when you open that paycheck and you realize, oh, my God, how much am I paying for health insurance? It's a lot. Everybody's, is, is saying that. Um, but, um, I think to make it, yeah, at least a little more palatable is, is to really continue to be strong in, uh, increasing, uh, uh, our, our, uh, our employee salaries.
I'll come to you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Hummel?
Um, I just had a question on, this is a very small question, but it looks like you have, um, this is from Mr. Baker. The different plans have employee plus spouse, employee plus spouse, and then you've got one that says E, employee plus one. Is that just a typo or, I mean, is it supposed to be employee plus one for all of them? Or is it employee plus spouse for all of them?
The, the way the structure is for the high deductible plan, you can add one extra person. It could be a spouse, it could be somebody else, it's the way that...
Okay, so it truly, it truly is a difference of, it's an employee plus one for the high deductible?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and but the others has to be a spouse?
That's correct. We've, we've added it that way, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then my other question is just kind of a general question when we look at this ten or fifteen percent estimated increase. Are you getting any sense from the insurance company that there's going to be any kind of a differential for people that are vaccinated versus not vaccinated? Because I've also been reading that certain insurance companies are possibly moving in that direction. And I just wondered if you'd heard that or definitely heard that it isn't happening?
I don't believe that's happening.
Okay, thanks.
It's one of the many other unknowns that we're, we're facing right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Uh, thank you. I, I just, um, the, back to the question about the RFP that's underway, adding yet another level of uncertainty. Depending on that, how that goes, could that be part of this next year's fiscal budget, uh, next year's budget that we're talking about? Or would that be the following year?
The process is well underway and we would hope to have that change made if we're going that direction, I believe, this year?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from our board? Thank you. Ms. Ewing?
Okay, so the last few slides will just summarize what we've discussed this afternoon. Um, our preliminary state revenue increase as compared to our fiscal year twenty-two adopted budget and based on the governor's introduced budget is seven million, nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred fifty. As we look at a summary of the expenditures that we've gone through this afternoon, the cost to maintain the dollar twenty-five per hour bus driver salary increase is two hundred thousand. The cost of a salary increase, again, is approximately one million for each percentage increase. A five percent increase is what is included in the governor's introduced budget. Increase cost for health insurance based on a fifteen percent overall increase, a cost share of fifty percent employer, fifty percent employee is approximately one point eight million. And the division fully covering the cost is approximately three point five million. Again, that's for the fifteen percent increase. Essential increases in FTEs for school counselors and elementary teachers is approximately one million. Mandatory increases in FTEs for special education teachers is approximately three hundred twenty thousand. And essential FTEs for special education aides and a pre-K instructional assistant is approximately two hundred seventy-five thousand. Contractual services increases amount to approximately four hundred thirteen thousand. And estimated increases for workers' compensation, general liability and property insurances is approximately thirty-nine thousand. And again, the estimated increase at this time for New Horizons is based on a ten percent increase, which is a hundred and eighty thousand. So these preliminary mandated and essential expenditure increases amount to between nine point two million and twelve million, depending on compensation increases and health insurance increases. And the preliminary state revenue increase totals approximately eight million. So with only those expenditure increases discussed this afternoon, we're looking at a shortfall of approximately one point three million to four million. And just a reminder, this revenue only includes the anticipated increase in state revenue based on the governor's introduced budget and does not include any increase from the localities. Over the past eleven years, our average increase from the localities has been two and a half percent, not counting the year that James Blair opened. This chart shows what a one and a half percent, two percent, and two and a half percent increase in local funding would amount to over our fiscal year twenty-two budget. Again, this was a preliminary look at our state revenue based on the governor's introduced budget. This information will change in the coming weeks as the General Assembly convenes and takes action. We have also only reviewed mandatory and essential cost increases this afternoon. There are other cost increases and potential savings that will be reviewed at the January eighteenth budget work session. Upcoming dates in the budget process include a budget work session and pre-budget public hearing on January eighteenth, presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget on February fifteenth, a public hearing on March first. And there will be a joint budget work session with our funding partners at a date to be determined in March. And then the budget will be presented for your approval on March fifteenth. And that concludes our presentation. And if there are any additional questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any additional questions? Yes, Ms. Hummel?
Just for people that this is the first time they've gone through this, we have a shortfall every, every year at this point. I mean, it's, it's always the shortfall and it's a matter of, um, how much the localities pitch in to cover the shortfall. And I just want to say that with the eight million dollars that was returned to the localities, um, coffers, that it's just something we, I hope everyone keeps in mind, that there was a very, very significant amount of money that was returned to the localities last year. So when we're talking about this shortfall and, um, accommodating, having the, the localities accommodate the shortfall, I'm just hopeful that that will be, you know, in the front of their minds as we proceed through the budget talks.
Ms. Hunley?
I don't have a, a question, just a comment. Um, I really appreciate seeing the, um, the school counselors in there. They're vital. I've seen their work. I've heard of their work. And, um, anything we can do to maintain that and also special ed to support them. So I'll make, make sure we maintain those numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Anyone else?
If I could just add, uh, Mr. Baker, that the, um, the counselors we added in last year, but again, four were funded in the American Rescue Fund Grant. And we do, we have this plan to start bringing them into the operating budget before the grant runs out because those four counselors keep us at one to two fifty. And that has been a huge, uh, thing this year for every teacher and every staff member to have extra counselors in our building. It really was a, uh, with the support of the board, we were able to do something pretty significant last year and get into the one to two fifty. So bringing them into the, the operating budget means that they won't go away in, in a year's time.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Dr. Beers?
Um, Mrs. Ewing, I, I just have a question. I'm looking at the last slide where it has estimated amount, preliminary shortfall, one point two million to four million. Do both of those reflect, uh, or let me say it a better way. Where, where do we see, no, that's not it either. I, I know we've talked about a five percent salary increase on, on the, uh, you know, from, from the governor's side. Is that represented in, in that range?
Yes, so the...
Or is one percent on this one and five percent are, that's what I'm trying to figure out?
The shortfall of the one point two million would include a five percent salary increase and it includes, um, the fifteen percent increase to health insurance with the division assuming fif- doing a fifty-fifty, um, cost share. The higher figure of four million includes a salary increase of six percent and the division absorbing the, um, full health insurance.
Okay, it makes it easier. I think when talking to people to, 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 um, we have a shortfall. The smaller shortfall is based on this. The larger shortfall is based on, you know, if we, if we can give our teachers that seven percent increase, whatever it might be, yeah. I think that's, that's helpful. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Beers.
Of course, all these numbers will change. If the governor's budget comes in at less than five percent, we will get less and we will have less to give. And therefore, we will automatically come down to, to meet that. But the four point, over four million, that, that's, we would hope is our worst-case scenario at this moment in time. And, and we have other needs to talk about at the next budget meeting, which, again, we've got to then put everything into some kind of priority list moving forward.
Okay. Uh, final comments or questions from the board? I want to thank Renee, uh, Ms. Ewing, excuse me, for all of your hard work. And I don't know when you begin this process, but I know it's arduous and you've got a great team. You never fail us. So I thank you for your work, you and Dr. Herron and your entire staff. Thank you so much for giving us a lot to consider and support as we look at the calendar and the, the work that you have before, so as we go forward. Final comments?
Yep, just thank you for your input tonight and thank you again, Ms. Ewing, for, for the excellent job.
With that, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.